We will begin the meeting of the Human Resources Committee. A copy of the Open Meeting Act is located at the entrance of the room. If we could go around and introduce ourselves.
I'm PJ Morgan with the County Board.
Mary Morgan, County Board.
Tim McAllen, Human Resources.
Karen Butch, Human Resources.
Matt Oberle, Human Resources.
Chris Rogers, County Board.
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator.
Mark Kraft, County Commissioner.
Constance Myrdorf, County Clerk.
Catherine Hall, County Administration.
Jane Faust, County Clerk's Office.
All right.
Speaker Spectator.
Okay. So the first item is the Compensation 101 Presentation and Discussion. And we also have Marcos San Martin with us from our office. All right. So you guys want to go ahead and get started?
So based on the last meeting that we had with the, around the increases for this year, we wanted to give kind of a baseline for everybody so that we're all working from the same playbook, I guess, so to speak. And we also wanted to recap the details from the Fox Lawson study that was done in 2009. So a lot of these things are going to be basic, but if everybody has the same information, then we can all, we can build on it from there. So first of all, what is compensation? Basically, it's everything, all financial returns that somebody is going to get as part of an employment relationship. The objectives of compensation, these are numbered, but not necessarily in this order depending on your perspective and where you are in the county. Formal recognition of contributions, we want to attract and retain talented employees, rewarding performance, challenging people, and then rewarding them with those work assignments, and then allowing personal growth as well. So a few different types of compensation. We talk about total compensation, or a few things that go into total compensation. You have base pay, and that's just going to be the standard rate and wages that you receive. If there's a merit aspect to it, there's going to be metrics that are measured. Benefits, fringe benefits, things like medical insurance, life insurance, retirement savings, things of that nature will go into that total comp package. The last three things are items that some other companies in private industry use, but something that we can't necessarily use here in Nodis County because of statutory limitations. So performance, performance, gain sharing, profit sharing, and then bonuses. So let's touch on union compensation a little bit so we kind of have an idea of where they're coming from, and then we'll touch on the non-union as well. So with union compensation, the wages are negotiated. Salary surveys are completed by consultants typically, and we look at comparable counties and try to find jobs that match so that we can get an idea of what they're paying in other counties. Unions can, and they have sponsored surveys in the past. We do this so that we can comply with the commission and desk relations. And typically, when they're looking at salary ranges, if there's multiple jobs that match, we use the lowest low, or they will use the lowest low and the highest high for that pay range spread. Local market data that private industry tends to use a lot is really irrelevant when it comes to union compensation. Non-union compensation, we have a couple of ways that we can score jobs, we can measure jobs. One is external salary survey. There are multiple surveys done. The local Human Resources Association in Omaha here does one that's really good, and it's all self-reported data, but it's also vetted so that we know that the information is accurate, and there's not going to be outliers that are going to skew the data one way or the other. There's also the objective job analysis that we use. So positions are assigned to a salary grade using a multi-factor approach, looking at position, qualifications, the responsibility level, how many people they supervise, things of that nature. It's all given a point value, and a point value is assigned to a grade. Market data might play a role in that grade depending on what it is. Pharmacist is one thing that comes to mind because the local market is so much higher than where the jobs actually would score. So when we talk about compensation program design, there's two different ways to look at it. We can pay for the job, or we can pay for the person. And paying for the job really goes back to those things that I just talked about, analyzing each job, making sure that the points line up with the grade, and making sure that everything is equal relative to what the, what the market is saying, and also to have some kind of internal comparison as well. When you're paying for the person, you're paying for somebody's skills and abilities. I know in Omaha, a few years back, Java programs were in high demand, and so they would jump ship and they would get paid 25% more than another company. And that's something that we have to be aware of, and those two things can fit together, and they can work together. It just, it depends on how we administer everything. So Salary Structures talks about all of the ranges, salary ranges that we use in an organization. Right now, every union group has a salary structure, and non-union, we've got, well, four technically. We've got staff range and then management, and then the administrative grades. And salary structures, they should be reviewed regularly to make sure that they're competitive with the market, and typically, they're adjusted at the beginning of the year for that, the upcoming year. Now, I touched on the objective job analysis, which is also sometimes referred to as a factor system. It's the three basic steps where all those compensable factors are reviewed and graded, it's weighted and scaled, and then each one is measured against the other, and then that will give us a score for that job. Market pricing is something that, again, private industry does much more, but it's a, it's a way for us to look at jobs that we can find matches to typically administrative assistant, accountant, things of that nature. We know there's going to be those jobs in a lot of organizations, so those are easy to find and do a good job matching, matching wages. We want to match base pay to be competitive using those published salary surveys. Ideally, we'd like to find an employer that is of the same size and in the same industry. It's not always possible, though, given the, given the nature of salary surveys and participation in those. So some of the advantages that market pricing does have is that it's really easy to explain, it's easy to understand. If you are in a startup world, it can be a competitive necessity because you want to make sure that you're paying your people competitively with other startup companies, especially in technology and things of that nature. And it really gives you solid information to give to employees when we're talking about pay. Sometimes, though, you can't match jobs, just they don't exist in other organizations in the same manner. Maybe you'll have two or three different roles put together for one company where they're split out into three different jobs in the other company, so it's a little bit difficult to do that. There's a cost to surveys, and there's also a cost to survey software that can get pretty expensive, so that's another factor that goes into it. You have to know what you're doing to be able to do it, and if you're really focused on, on internal equity, it's a big change in how jobs are graded and how people are paid. So it can be a, a big change that not everybody is entirely in favor of, so. When we look at how the market is used and whether or not it's given a lot of priority or a lot of, a lot of weight, this is a pretty good graph that I found. Over there on the far left, we've got the government with, as an industry. We use a by exception, and that's pretty much where we are at, the system that we have, the objective point of, objective job evaluation. And of course, the industry chain is low, or the pace of industry change is low. On the other end of the spectrum, like I talked about, you've got technology jobs, startups. That is going to change rapidly, and you want to be very aware of what the market's going on, so.
So we're kind of interesting because we have, like, healthcare that would be in a, with the health center, that would be kind of in a market-integrated position, but the bulk of the government, typical government are more in the market-aware columns, and so that makes a little bit different. But right now, you know, with the deregulated healthcare, there's been some pressure in the local market to push even the market-integrated, and that's why we're seeing a lot of the pharmacy jobs. I mean, and a person goes to school, and they're a pharmacist, and they can walk right out of college and get a job paying $100,000 right off the get-go with no experience. It makes it really difficult for us to compete, but there's other things that we need to take into account because most often, they're going to be going to a retail type of environment like a Walgreens or a CVS where they might be working the night shift, and they might be on call more often. And so there's some advantages here versus those types of environments, too, but those are all types of factors that we have to take into consideration, which we can do more so with the non-union jobs than we can with the union jobs.
So when I talk about the good, the bad, and the ugly of the salary surveys, I've already touched on some of the stuff. I think I kind of want to skip ahead to the, to the ugly. I mean, when you look at salary.com and Monster and those other web-based surveys, for all intents and purposes, for our needs, they're garbage because it's all self-reported. People can say, "Oh, I make $80,000 as, you know, a janitor," or something like that, and there's no checks and balances on the data. So employees like to go to that because it does show inflated wages for their positions, but it's, it's not reality. Fox Lawson study that was completed in 2009, this is a recap. I do have some of our, I guess, insight or our opinions in here as well, and I'll try to point those out. Typically, they're going to be in the parentheses just so we can all be on the same page. Now, they looked at 47 jobs. They were benchmarked against the local market and with salary data that they had available. Towers Watson, I think, was one of the companies that they used, a reputable salary survey companies. So basically, our salaries were about eight and a half, 8.8% above the market, and their threshold is 10% to be competitive. We recommend five as a competitive threshold, and that's what I use, you know, as long as I've been doing it, basically. When we start looking at salary ranges, we were 1% below market on the minimum, but 7.6% above market on the top end. So that means our range spread is wider than the typical market. They also found compression issues with our salary structure. At the time, they talked about there was basically three different grades that were all very close together. At this point, I, I found that there were actually four different salary structures that were, that were really close together, and this is going to cause compression because conceivably, we could have somebody in, let's say, an A5 that is supervising somebody in an M2, and their salary ranges are basically identical, and that will cause, cause a problem.
How many jobs would we have percentage-wise roughly below the market? In other words, I'm just wondering how many employees are affected by that? In other words, is it 10% of our employees are paid below the market?
Um.
Being on the minimum, man.
Yeah, it's really, it's really difficult for us to do that without going out and doing an actual survey, but if we were to, just a general sense is that typically, our support positions, administrative-type support, clerical-type support positions are paid above the market. And our, some of our mid-level positions, whether they're professional or supervisory positions, some of them on a case-by-case basis may actually be paid below market. And that's probably where we're seeing some of the issues, is that the union employees that might be represented by a contract that are in those support positions, in some cases, may be earning more than the people that are supervising them. Or their grades may, as Matt pointed out, there may not be very much of a difference between their, their grades.
And granted, this study was then seven years ago.
Yes.
But what I wondered about is if you have 2,000 employees roughly, that you'd say to me, "Well, you're above the market on 1,900 of the employees," even though it's 3.8 to 7, but there's probably 100 employees that would be below the market. That's what I was trying to.
Yeah.
But it's fine. I understand that it takes some time, but, you know, you always are concerned about the below the market at that low end, and we need to bring the two closer together, in my opinion.
Well, I think that when we looked at, when the minimum wage issue came up, we were looking at how many that would affect, and it was very, very small number.
Yes.
If I remember right.
Correct.
That, that we didn't have to worry about, so that would tell me that we're kind of above the market, if you will, in.
For the.
The high percentage of.
For the exempt, non-exempt.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that the county, you can look at it two ways. In some organizations, there's positions in the county that would have been exempt, that were never made exempt here. And so if we would have, if those jobs would have been in private industry, we probably would have had a greater number of positions that were considered exempt. But because a lot of our positions are not exempt, in fact, have always been, then we don't, we don't get impacted quite as much when that kind of a change goes through.
But even if you go strictly on minimum wage.
Just the nine or 10.
Nine or 10.
Yes.
That was where we found that we really didn't have to worry. We weren't going to see a big.
No.
Problem with having to come up with additional dollars.
Right, and, and that's one interesting thing about the Omaha market is the majority of entry-level positions are well above the minimum wage. When you can go to a Burger King and start out at, you know, $10 an hour, and the minimum wage at that time was like seven or.
Seven.
You know, so competition and need for bodies drives up the, the actual pay range that people start, but usually ahead of what any kind of legislative change would involve. But I, I, yeah, when, when we have a clerk position that's paying $15 an hour to start, and they only need one year of experience, and they might only need to type 25 words a minute, you know, we get 200 people apply for that job. So, you know, we have, generally don't have a lot of difficulty attracting for those general types of jobs. Where we run into problems sometimes is more the professional, unique kind of positions that require unique skill sets. And that's where we sometimes run into issues of being able to attract people. And if they make it five years, we have a better chance of keeping them because now they have besting into the pension plan. But that first five years, they may leave because the pay may be better somewhere else.
Okay.
See, I guess, and Marcos and Diana are two much more qualified people than myself about asking some questions, but, you know, I think when Marcos works with Diana, and they try to look at how we're negotiating.
Yeah.
A contract, if you're already 4% over the market when you do the comps, well, then you might say, "Why would we get another 4% raise when, you know, the cost of living is running at 1.8 or 2.4 or something?" That's all. But if you're under the market, then we need to be starting to figure out how we catch that up.
Yeah.
And not widen that gap.
P Administration, there were, this goes back to the compression issue. The graph at the, with the table at the bottom shows you the different ways that we are, that we pay people depending on the group that they belong to. So down at the bottom, the very bottom, the union scales, they've got a, a range structure in a few places. They've got step structures for the majority of their jobs, so they would qualify them for cost of living adjustments as well as steps potentially. When you start looking at the administrative and the range employees, really, the cost of living adjustment's the only way that they get a raise each year. On the steps and in the general admin grades, there's a step structure so they get a step every year along with that cost of living adjustment.
And I think when we met with the commissioners, when we met with you at the HR Committee last year, part of the reason we were focusing on the, the management professional range employees is if you look at the graph, the whole, they, they only have one mechanism, as does administrative, for getting a pay increase, and that's COLA. Whereas every other type, general administration, management professional, and union scales, they have step and COLA, or they, you know, so they're getting in essence two increases to one for the other group, and I think that's why we were focused so much on the range people up here.
So Fox Lawson had basically five total recommendations, some immediate changes and then moderate changes. Now, keep in mind, all these dollar figures are in $2,000, $9. The reason that we don't have a, a big number for them is that we don't know exactly what the methodology was that they used, so we can't exactly recreate what they did. We can give a, a good estimate, or we can, we can take a guess on what they did, how they did it, but it really depends, too, on, on the board's direct, the board, direction the board wants us to go as well. So we kind of have to, one, to weigh those options and present everything, and then we can move forward from there as far as having a more focused plan.
What did that study cost?
$75,000 in 2009.
Okay.
This the one done two years ago?
It was done, it was done in 2009. We haven't had an.
It's the one Lee was working on?
Yeah.
When he, when he.
Yeah, way back. That was when I was here the first time. Mark, Mark Williams and I did a lot of groundwork on it, so.
So their first immediate change was a salary structure consolidation. Basically, taking those pay ranges that are very close together, eliminating them and creating a new, you know, creating a new structure. What they did was they used the highest maximum and the lowest minimum to create a new grade. I think we could improve that and just use, just extend them forward without necessarily worrying about what they are currently. For a range employees, there wouldn't necessarily be much of a cost because they would just be slotted into that new range as one, one option. So at the time, it was a $15,000 change for those 11 employees, so. Market premiums, and this is something that we would want to look at doing, especially for jobs that are difficult to match using the objective job analysis and the market conditions. So pharmacist, of course, comes to mind again because of, because of the way that they are paid, how much they are paid. Basically, it gives some flexibility in, in jobs that are very difficult to fill. Typically, you'd look at IT jobs might be in this category, too. We don't have a lot of them because of our arrangement dot com, but if, if we're having trouble hiring a job, maybe we do need to increase the grade to adjust those market conditions, and we create some kind of formal policy around the, how we would do that and how it would be administered so that there wouldn't be things happening, you know, just really, really, for lack of a better term, with, with those grade increases for And then the supervisor pay policy, they found a lot of issues where supervisory employee pay was very close together. They would recommend some kind of formal policy to address it and setting a standard of, okay, supervisor has to pay 10% more than their employees or 5% or whatever we decide is the right, 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 right way to go. So they had, they reviewed all those relationships, and it was about $250,000, roughly, to increase the supervisory wages to be in that 5 or 10% difference, so. Moderate changes, the salary range adjustments, they recommended increasing the number of steps in a given grade from nine to 16. Basically, the current steps are about 5% apart, excluding the first two. So year over year, they're going to get about a 5, 5 to 6% increase plus whatever the cost of living adjustment is. Sort of expanded structure would give an annual average increase of about 3% plus whatever the COLA might be on top of that, so it would still be market-competitive. But I want to be very clear that if we move the non-union people to this sort of structure, we would just perpetuate the increase in equities with the union groups because they would still be on a 5 to 6% increase plus the COLA structure.
Which would create more compression between the staff and the supervisors, so then that would also create, that would perpetuate that issue as well.
If we could do the same structure for everybody, then there's some, I guess there's some advantages to doing that, but it would be a very, I think it'd be a very difficult sell for Marcos and Diana to get that done with, with the union groups, so. Let's see, the, the non, non-COLA increases. So right now, again, like I mentioned, we don't have a way to move range employees through their grade, so their relationship to the minimum and the maximum is always going to be the same because they just get that COLA. So we'd want to create some kind of system to move them through that range like their step counterparts do, typically their step subordinates even. There's pay for performance, there's, you know, steps, there's metrics that we could do, I mean, there's a lot of different options that we've got. Now, if they, they developed sort of a, looking at where they would be based on their tenure and their position, and it was almost $700,000 to get everyone to the appropriate place within their range, and I think that is the biggest sticker shock for the, the commission at the time, and part of the reason why a lot of these maybe got shelved.
And, and we did do this one year. We, Mark, Mark and I worked on developing a matrix. I don't remember if it was in, was it 2011?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we did go in and we worked at placing individuals based upon their tenure and their job in a particular core type within their range, and we, we, we did do that for one year, but then the following year, it was abandoned because of costly, and, you know, so that, that's going to be an, an issue. You know, all of these things have a price tag to them.
So Fox Lawson recommended that, you know, adopting some of the pay policies, they would have low cost, low cost, and then looking at some kind of plan to implement over, over the course of several years. And after the course of several years, we'd probably have everybody in the right place and continue that, that system forward. And then we, they also recommended having some kind of performance evaluation program. So conclusions from the Fox Lawson study, they do have a lot of good recommendation. Of course, there's a price tag to some of those, but we also want to make sure that we're mindful of the union pay practices so that we can sync up with those and not have an increase in equities going forward. If we went to something where we focused more on the market, it's very possible that job, some jobs would have increased grades, but it's also possible that there would be jobs that were decreasing grade, and we'd have to, have to be aware of that, and if we're, make sure that we have a solid data to stand on to say why your job is being reevaluated. So just something to, to keep in mind. And then, of course, there's also the investment in the salary surveys. We, at a previous employer, we purchased a Canaxa, and it's a, it's a solid program. They've got data throughout the entire country, employers that are big, small, and everywhere in between, and it was about $20,000 a year to purchase that. There would, of course, be a lot of work to match our jobs into those existing jobs, but once that work is done, it's a pretty slick system moving forward, so there's, there's costs there as well.
The other thing I think that's important to understand is a lot of the Fox Lawson was addressing the non-union jobs because we're, how we determine union wages is defined statutorily within the state, and, you know, we could deviate from that. However, if a labor union decided that they wanted to pursue a case through CIR, if it differ, if our practice differs from what the statutes are, they're going to revert back to the statutes. So, and we haven't seen a particular case go before the CIR yet based upon the new statutes for the salary determination. So we don't even know how they would rule at this point in time, so.
So our recommendations moving forward would be to eliminate the three different structures that we've got for non-union jobs. We've got a G scale, and R scale, and an A scale, the management, general, and then administrative. Combine those all together, and then we'd be able to fix those compression issues that we talked about. We want to look at some kind of market comparison for those jobs that are difficult to fill and review the supervisory subordinate relationships and make sure that we're happy and we're, we're accept, the differences are acceptable to us. We'd also want to look at some kind of mechanisms to move employees through the range, whether that be convert them all to step employees. We have pay for performance, we have tenure, I mean, so there's a myriad of options that we could come up with, some kind of matrix program. Something that's come up recently is the, the wages for the county attorney and the public defender's staff. We'd recommend creating some kind of structure around those jobs, an associated pay range, so that, you know, everybody that's, just as an example, it's called an attorney one. They could be, there could be an attorney one in both offices, the pay range is, you know, whatever, $10 to $13. So if you're attorney one, you're paid between that, and that harmonizes those salaries and takes care of the statutory requirements.
Can I ask some, how you do that when they're basically all that will?
Every, for every private employer is an at-will employer, and almost every.
No, but theirs look different. Theirs is like being a mayoral appointee. I mean, basically, my understanding is they aren't in that realm. They're almost like, you know, when you was in the mayor's office, you, that whole staff, you'd walk in there next day and say, boom, they, they operate like that.
So all's I can tell you is we implemented it at Sarpy County. Lancaster's had it for years for their attorneys. So I think it can be done, it's just whether or not the two elected officials are willing to pursue that course of action.
Is.
It actually allows some promotional opportunities within the, the department, each office, and so, for example, you can have like a deputy county attorney, you can have a senior deputy county attorney, you can have a lead deputy county attorney, then have your chief deputy. You can do the same thing in the public defender's office, you know, but that is whether or not they're interested in doing that, and we haven't really pursued any conversations with them to this day, today, yet.
They're not on the civil services one?
Pardon me?
They're not on the civil service?
No.
Is Sarpy on the civil services?
No, the attorneys are not. Almost all the civil searches, all the civil service statutes in Nebraska have attorneys, physicians, those folks are exempt from civil service.
There might actually be some willingness to work with you on it only because of the most recent issues with the pay. You know, not only between each of the. You know, um, not only between each of the offices, but with the county attorneys in particular, and then, you know, kind of holding over our heads the going union. You know, and we had to go out and compare what was going on with, so there, there may be, and, you know, getting back to the two offices, they're always now trying to say, well, if one gets this, the other should get this, and so they're-
That's a, that's a general idea to help eliminate some of that, that issue.
Yeah.
And then, of course, uh, looking at some job descriptions and structures for employees that are at the legal courts or like bailiffs and things of that nature, but it's, and they're in a similar position, they don't have a pay grade assigned to them, but we, it's just an area for, area for improvement.
Yeah, and I think even if there's not support to, to do the actual structures, which hopefully there would be, I think there's a really good case which they would be comfortable with in creating job descriptions because, you know, you have to be able to determine essential functions in order to, to comply with Americans with Disabilities Act and, you know, so those types of things, I think there would be support for at least that much of it. But I, I, I'm hopeful that they would be open to looking at actual structures, salary structures.
And so then I added some compensation terms in, at the end, uh, just a few pages of things that we, just some of the jargon that we use so that everybody knows what it means. And, uh, you can use those types, we can use that language going forward, so. And I also add one slide at the very end about the F L S A, and I think that's the next agenda item up, so, um, just a, a few highlights of that as well.
So if we were going to, um, say, let's move forward with this set of recommendations, how far behind are we though, because this was in two oh nine, to be able to achieve what we should have achieved?
Um, well, I, I think, you know, first of all, we'd have to take a look at it and then we'd have, um, we may have to, I don't have staff resources to do an actual survey, so that means we might have to hire a consultant again to do, to do another survey similar to what we did. Second, um, I don't think that the county could afford to undertake all of it in any given year and, um, before, in a previous life, I was a compensation consultant. And so, uh, just as Fox Lawson had recommended here, I think it would have to be something that was implemented over a number of years because the costs could potentially be prohibitive, if you just said, okay, all these issues that we've had that have been created and, and built over time, we're gonna fix them in one year. Unless the commissioner's motto reads taxes. That's probably the only way it would work, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I know it, I have to do that.
You know that, right, right.
So I, I think that, you know-
Tough deal.
It, it is, it is, and, um, you know, from a pure compensation standpoint, what we really like to see is, is to create equity as much as possible within an organization. And it's gonna be difficult. We can't, uh, I know at the strategic planning session, there were some discussions about, well, we, we need to come up with a total compensation plan that's gonna fit for every single employee, and we really can't do that because we have two very different groups. We have unionized employees that their compensation by statute is driven in another direction, and if we were to follow that same methodology with non-union employees, which we could, and that would be the only way you could come close to making it, um, uniform, um, that's gonna have, that's also gonna have major cost implications. Um, because you're gonna take every range job and put it on a step, and then you're gonna have to go out and you're gonna have to find matches, and then whatever the matches say the increase should be, that increase should apply to every single job. And so I think, you know, it's gonna be more costly, um, to go that route, but that, that's really the only way you could really achieve uniformity, um, with the two groups.
So of these recommendations, what, in terms of your department, would you be proposing for us to support, I think, you know, like creating the job descriptions and structures for the county attorney and public defenders act would be, I'm not wanna say easy, but would be easier than some of these other ones?
Yeah, that-
It's a pretty straightforward project.
Yes, and, and I think that we could also, um, I, I think we could also look at creating a one salary structure. Um, I think we could put in a market-driven compensation for selected positions. I think that's something that could be done within our department. Um, we could probably do a review of the supervisory pay related to subordinates, but that is not something we'd be able to get accomplished this year. Um, so that would probably have to be a twenty seventeen project. You know, the mechanism for employees to move through the range, um, as Matt said, we can come up with options, we can come up with multi-tier matrices, but the bottom line there is gonna be cost. And so, um, that one, we definitely could look at, but people, you know, which we should do, at some, we, we have to address that at some point because the range employees are at a disadvantage over everybody else that's on a step plan. And so, at this point though, that might be something that would have to be phased in over a period of a number of years, and additionally, I think that we would wanna definitely for the non-union employees, look at at least doing a survey for those folks. Just so that we're able to make a determination.
Okay. So those two, that, that one and the one before, would probably wait till two thousand seventeen?
Yeah.
And then the last two we could do within?
Sixteen.
Yeah, okay. So does anybody else on the committee, do they feel okay with those? The first two would be done in-house and those could be done probably currently. The next two, review supervisory pay and the mechanism, would have to probably wait till two thousand seventeen and would probably take some outside surveying to be done on it. And then the last two could be done within our department resources. So out of these recommendations, if we worked on those two top ones and two bottom ones, that would at least lead us into some, some things to be getting done
Yeah.
on the issue, so.
And, and, you know, there could be some costs associated with one or two.
Two, yeah.
But, um, you know, we would be able to hopefully give some kind of a projection of that.
So, so I don't think they will, but what's, what's your response if they're not too hot to the job description thing?
The, the attorney's office, um, I, I think, um, quite candidly, I'm pretty sure we would get support from the county attorney's office because I think the civil division will realize that that's something that needs to be heard. Um, I don't know, um, how the public defender would view it. I, you know, like I said, I'd have to, I have not had any conversations with either of the elected officials, so, um, but it would not be something that is absolutely out of the realm because the other two larger counties in, in Nebraska already had these in place. They already have job descriptions and they already have salary structures in place. So. And it would, quite candidly, it would also, it could make their lives easier. And it, and it would assist with the, with what occurred with the county attorneys previously and that they didn't feel like their pay was ever being evaluated. And, uh, once structures are established, then we evaluate those structures the same as we do any other structures.
Okay. At least get you some direction.
Yes, thank you very much.
And then the Fair Labor Standard Act is, um, we pointed out is the next, um, item on the agenda, and who's gonna take that?
Um, well, we'll just, uh, I will.
Okay.
Just a real quick update, we're continuing, uh, I think we've identified every, uh, particular job, and we are looking at about thirty-five employees that would be affected, um, that we will have to switch that are currently exempt, non-exempt. Uh, we have one job that is kind of an anomaly, and we're gonna have to do some tracking on that job. It's, um, uh, a, an attorney, a hearing officer with G A. And, uh, so, um, Tim has done quite a bit of groundwork on that with, um, and had some conversations with, with, uh, Breding. And so I think we'll, um, have a process identified on how to address that one particular outlier, but overall, I think that it should be a fairly seamless, uh, transition. I don't believe that most of these employees earn any kind of overtime um, on a regular basis, so, uh, the cost really should be insignificant.
What, what's the status that the Congress is gonna try and block this? Do they think there's any chance that they will?
The trade associations that I belong to, um, are basically saying that they think there'll be an effort, but they don't think it'll be successful. And everybody, including most of the labor attorneys, are advising plan to proceed because, uh, the effective date's December one and it's highly unlikely that it'll be overturned. And once it's implemented, it's, it's-
Yeah, once it's implemented.
It's, it'll be even more unlikely that that'll happen, so. But if it is overturned, I mean, we will not actually make the changes until we get closer to the December one date, so if it is overturned, we'll just, we will abandon everything that we had in process and, and it'll be no harm either way.
So besides that issue that Joe just brought up, weren't, wasn't there something else we were waiting for to get clarification on?
Um, that was with one of the other executive orders that we talked about, and, um, that, those, uh, we're supposed to be getting federal
Regs or, yeah.
regulations in September.
In September, okay.
So what-
Not on this one, like, okay.
No, no, that was on, and we have another executive order that just came out that will affect, um, the health center and corrections, uh, because of their federal contracts, and that came, that was just passed last week um, and, uh, put in as a final reg, and the effective date is August first, but there may be some minor things, um, that probably will be more structural in nature. Um, and, and, um, I'll prepare, I can prepare a memo on that and send that out to everybody.
It, it would probably, um, be, you know, this is starting to be talked about at a lot of the meetings Chris and I go to, um, not only state but national.
Yes.
And so, um, it would probably be a good idea to put a PowerPoint on these executive orders, each executive order, and do it in front of the board.
Okay.
Um, just so everybody is up to speed with it. And even though we don't know all of the details, um, I'm not so worried about that because again, people are talking about it with the caveat that, for instance, we have to wait for federal regulations to come down, but to put it on everybody's radar.
Yeah.
That we know about it, we're looking at it, here's what's been done so far.
Okay.
And, um, you could just work with Karen to let me know what board date works best for you to do that. Any other questions on that one? Even though it's, you know, nineteen position jo- jobs and thirty-five employees, it's actually a little less than what I thought it was gonna be in terms of affecting us, so.
And some of those jobs, um, are union jobs and some of them aren't, so.
Oh, can you do that too, list out how many are union and how many are non-union?
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the advantages of, of having a union right now is because most of those jobs are non-exempt, so it's like such a small enterprise.
Yeah. Any other questions on this one? Then the last item is discussion about the health savings account hosting services.
I'm gonna move over here though so I can see everybody.
Before she gets started, thank you, this was actually most helpful in explaining everything.
If you, if you have any questions, I'm, in my office, happy to talk about it.
Great, thank you.
So the health savings account is the high deductible plan that the county has for, um, as an option for employees for health insurance. And currently, we have Union Bank that hosts that account for us, and, um, we went with Union Bank several years ago, um, I think it was back in two thousand ten or eleven. And it, it was done through, not an R F P because, um, it wasn't felt necessary for an R F P, but we did informal collection of information from area banks, H R and the county administration did. And they selected Union Bank, and at that time, Union Bank had no maintenance fees for these accounts. There would still be other fees associated with any type of banking account, like you're overdrawn or whatever, but the maintenance fee is kind of what we're focusing on today, because, um, what happened then is recently in June, one of the employees who has an account there or, or their union representative, um, contacted a board member and said these fees keep coming, going up, that, that are charged to the employee. And this did come up a couple of years ago where we realized Union Bank started charging a fee, but it was so minimal that the decision was made, yes, the employees can pay this, not the county. And at that time, it was twenty dollars a year, but now they've gone up again, and so employees are again coming and saying, look, these fees keep going up, um, could the county pay for it, or maybe you wanna look at a different bank? So, um, that's where we're at now. I did contact Union Bank and, um, they, we don't have a contract with them because when this, when we started this relationship years ago, there was no fee. So I think at that time, people figured, well, we don't really need a contract, but they are willing to enter into a contract. They told me that, yes, we, we did increase the fees. Um, they said, it's because we have a new system on the, you know, online, it's very user-friendly. The employees can, um, go to that, there's also tools online that they can learn about whether or not, you know, this is a good idea to go with the health savings account versus the regular account. Um, and so, yes, the fees did go up, but we would be happy to work with you county on not raising those in the future for three more years. They said they would keep them steady and that they would enter into a contract if that's what we wanted to do. Um, I also looked, I also contacted six other banks in town just to see what they have. Bank of the West doesn't offer it, U S Bank does not offer this. Um, but Security National Bank does. They also have a maintenance fee, but they said they may waive it, so if we wanna pursue further. The First National Bank has a three dollar monthly fee, but I wasn't able to talk to anybody in person there just because I kept getting a recording.
It's hard to get hold of them.
Um, so it's possible-
They always answer for Commissioner Boyle.
There was a recording and it was like, oh, and then I was on full-
We're gonna tell them that, they're gonna tell us that story.
If you get, if you find a person, if you get your number from them, and you can sound like-
Yeah, and I didn't go into the branch, but I did call the local branch, like the downtown ones. Okay, so, um, but, you know, they may, they may waive that, I don't know. Mutual of Omaha has a maintenance fee of two dollars. This is kind of the going rate, two dollars a month. Again, they said they would probably waive it. And then Union Bank, like I said, there's this two dollars a month also, and, and they would guarantee that rate would not go up for three more years. So, I guess a couple of questions. Right now, employees are with Union Bank, um, they have accounts set up with Union Bank, it's the middle of a plan year. But the question, I think, by the employee was not that they're upset with Union Bank's service, but that, you know, can the county pay this amount? Because we're trying to get people to go towards this health plan, if there's fees, it might deter people from wanting to do that.
Did you contact Core?
Oh, gosh, yes, I did. Did I not say them? Yeah, they have no maintenance fee.
No maintenance, at all?
None, yeah. Again, all these banks will have their other standard fees. You know, if you are overdrawn or you want extra checks or whatever, but the monthly maintenance fee is all I really looked at.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to do a greater analysis, we could do that, but I was just looking at the, the monthly fee. But, yeah, they had none.
And Union Bank is two dollars now or three dollars?
Two dollars a month.
Two dollars a month, and it's going up to?
Well, it's two dollars, two dollars a month is what it, the new rate. Well, it's two dollars, two dollars a month is what it, the new rate. It was twenty dollars a year. So it went up four dollars a year. Which doesn't, again, doesn't sound like much, but it was enough for people to say, you know, what's going on here?
Something for free and then.
Well, and the other bad part about this, I guess, is they didn't notify, they notified the county, but not the correct department. So HR did not know about it. I mean, they learned about it, we learned about it through the employee. And I think that's what happened two years ago too. So I did talk to Union Bank about that and she, the person they've been sending stuff, she was actually in the clerk's office. Made no sense, so she was gonna update all of that. But, so where we're at is, you know, what do we do at this time period to address the issue of, you know, maybe the county board wants to decide whether or not to pay the fee. That's one issue, and then the other issue is, do we want to do a more formalized RFP or something to see if there's better rates out there? But for the second part of it, I'm not sure we want to do that unless going into the next plan year. And then there's, how does that affect people? They have to move their accounts.
And the county guys contribute a thousand dollars to those HSA accounts, reasonable person, so there is some money.
So the cost right now with the current twenty dollars a year is how much that we're paying, or they're paying?
We don't pay, the county pays nothing, it's all the employee, they pay that twenty dollars a month.
And how many are there?
There's about fifty, forty's that are involved.
And I think part of the reason, in talking to Kathy Adair, that there was some discussion about it when they first started charging a fee and I think it was kind of what Matt said, is that the county's already giving them a thousand dollars every, you know, year for the contribution and for a single and two thousand for family. And so having them pay twenty dollars a year for the service fees didn't seem to be an issue. And so I think that was part of the reason at that time, there were, there really, I mean, it wasn't like it wasn't discussed. It was discussed and there was a decision made at that time not to pay the fees. And so now we're back here again. So I know, having worked for financials previously, is if they waived the fees, that's great. But usually, you know, they like to have an organization's entire banking business to waive a lot of those extra service fees, so.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to, Core Bank, they just said we don't have a fee.
Yeah.
But some of them said, well, we have a fee, but we could work with you.
Yeah. Yeah. So Core's relatively new and they're pretty aggressive, so.
So Union Bank though, would they at all have, did you talk to them about just leaving it, not raising it?
I didn't, but I, because they indicated they were, this is what they were doing for all of their clients. I mean, you know, those were their set fees.
But but they offered to do a no fee if we went with a three-year contract.
Yeah, they said they would keep it flat. They said they would keep it flat. And for three years, because I said to them, I go, you know, we don't have a contract and it'd probably be a good idea if we did, because then when you notified about fees, we would know, you know, and all this. She said, sure, we can do that and we can, we won't raise them.
But it would be at the increase, not the?
That's what they were, that's what they were gonna send over.
The other bank is no fees, why wouldn't you just move?
That would be somewhat on the part of the employees to go and set up that new account, because we can't do that for them.
No, but if you told the employee, you're gonna pay a fee, but over here you can get no fee, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Except for I think some of the employees just thought we would pay it and then they wouldn't have the inconvenience. I don't know. I think that's what they were intending, not go switch the bank on me, but I don't know that we care at the end of the day.
So if we're gonna pay it, we'll move it to where we don't have a fee.
Right, I mean, that's the other part, because because then you would, you would be the payee, the person paying. The county would be paying, if it'd be a contract, you'd be notified if they're going up and you'd be in a better place to negotiate it. You know, right now, again, unless we heard about it, and then we're not even paying the fee. So for us to say, well, you should lower those fees for those employees, it's just not.
No leverage.
Exactly.
You have some to say, Mike, like you got an idea?
No, no, it's fine. Mr. Rogers is right, yeah.
So, you know, I guess the question is, because it's July now, I mean, is this something that we would change right away? Or do you want to wait till the plan year? Do you want to do an RFP?
When does it go into effect?
Middle of July.
Oh.
I think we want to do it, Joe and he talks and, no.
I, you know, it's, if we can go somewhere where we don't have fees, you know, this isn't a lot of business for anybody, so don't take it and charge us.
Let them have it, let them have it. If you're okay, guy.
It's just logistics of it.
To everybody to let them know that they're gonna have to move their accounts from Union, from Union Bank and trust over to.
Or pay the fee. Well, it would either be.
I think it's one or the other.
We normally have one.
Okay, then I think we'd tell them we're moving it.
I mean, just to throw another option out there, there are national companies that do HSA administration too and beyond the local banks, and I don't want to over-set my bounds, I guess, if that would, but it is another option if we get a full RFP to do a national company. They may not be interested for fifty accounts potentially, but.
You might want to do a full RFP just so you can see what the other charges are, because they could have no maintenance fee, but they could have high fees for everything else. And that might not be, people might not like that either.
And that then wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to get that done till?
I think you'd just see if Core has the right deal, get it done and go.
So contact Core and.
Who's the other one that had a no?
Well, Security National had a fee, but they said they might.
They said they'd negotiate.
Same with Mutual of Omaha.
So maybe if you did a spreadsheet of what they currently have, and then when you talk to them, ask them what their other fees are.
Okay.
And then whether they would be agreeable to locking in, I would say, go to a five-year contract, three to five-year contract at no fee. And just see what they say.
Are they able, are the people able to, as I understand these accounts, they're like an investment account too, or they can be?
Yeah, and that's the other, that's the other thing that we have to look at, is the money that they have there that can get invested. They invest in that organization's, you know, instruments or whatever. And so getting them to move is not going to be like even as easy as a checking account. It it's gonna take some time and I think that, my concern, quite candidly, is we've had one employee call us about the concerns about the fees. And we haven't heard from the other fifty. And if we go to the other forty-nine and say, you're, we're gonna move you from X financial to Y financial because they're not gonna have fees, the other forty-nine employees may object because they have other funds coming in from other places to their account, which would have to be moved. They might have to reevaluate their investments that they have set up associated with that. So I, you know, I I kinda, part of me thinks, are we making a big adjustment or a big change? Because we've, we've heard from one employee who's upset because they have to pay four more dollars a year.
Well, is it one employee or is it employees that are represented?
The person you've contacted is the president of FOP too, and I don't know if he's calling on his behalf or, I'm sure he's calling on behalf of his union, but I don't know if anybody's complained to him or if it's him, that's interesting.
And I don't, and I don't know how many of the people that are in the HSA or even FOP individuals. We'd have to go in and look and see what union that employees belong to, so.
I didn't know about the investment part, that could be a little dicey.
Well, I can call Brian Paras at the FOP and just get his take on it. Because when this came up a couple of years ago, it, again, it was, you guys, can you just pay the fee for the employee?
And I think that's what they want, I just think they want us to pay their fee for fifty people.
Well, and we can say, we're not gonna do that, and here's the options that we have. And just see what he says, and we probably better do a little bit more homework on what does it mean to move those accounts if there's an investment piece to all of this. And then maybe bring it back, and we won't go in, I mean, we'll never make the mid-July timeframe, but that's okay. I'd rather do a little bit more homework than make the wrong move.
Yeah, okay, I'll call Brian and kind of get a sense as to what he's, and then if we can find out what other employees are in this group.
And so just to, for, for me again, the twenty dollars per year is gonna go up to a twenty-four?
Twenty-four dollars per year.
Yeah, I think it was being billed previously at like five dollars a quarter, and so they changed it to two dollars.
I can talk to Union Bank again too and make sure they understand what we're doing here.
And they might, maybe they'll stay, you know?
Yeah, tell them you're.
We're looking at other places.
Without telling you, look, and we've got several that said no fee and we'd just like to double-check with you.
Before we make any final decision.
Okay.
Anything else for the good of the cause? Otherwise, we're here.